Welcome to our final budget hearing for FY 2026. We are resuming our meeting and we will... Well, shall we start out with public comment? I don't really have an agenda. I have one request to speak form. If you would like to address us, please fill out a request to speak form and get it to our bailiff. But the only request to speak form I have is from Mr. Derek Powell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, again, I think everyone knows me by this point. My name's Derek Powell. I live over on Cove Road. And just discussing about the surrounding areas, you know, the impact that's being taken on the surrounding areas due to the development, the new development going on right now. I've got to say it plain, there's no accountability when it comes to these developers and the damage they're causing to my property in the surrounding area. Things are happening, things that are happening aren't fair to the folks who live here and yet nobody seems responsible for stepping in. And here's the other thing, why does it feel like the only way I can communicate with this board is standing right here at this podium? I've sent maybe three or four emails, and again, no disrespect, but misheard, I've sent three or four emails directly to you and not a single reply. Is that fair? If I treated my customers that way, I'd be out of business. The truth is, the developer is not being neighborly. They're not treating the homeowners with any respect and the impacts we're dealing with are very real. The water that's coming down right now, if, I mean, it'd be a great opportunity for someone to drive over there. The truth is, they're not treating the homeowners with any respect and the impacts we're dealing with are very real. You, or the commissioners, approve this development. That means you share the responsibility to make sure it doesn't wreck the lives of people living here. And I know Lennar wants to build more homes in this area. Well, if that's the case, then you need to stand up for us, or if we ask that you would, the residents, the voters, the ones who put you in those seats. All we're asking for is fairness, accountability, and for someone to have our backs. Thanks again, guys.
Mr. Powell, I'm going to respond. You have contacted my office and we have responded. You explained on three or four occasions through, via email and phone calls, the impacts to your property, and we asked if we could help. And you said, "No, no, we just, I just want you to be apprised of what's happening here." We offered to help three or four times and you repeatedly told us, "No," that you didn't want us to intervene, that you just wanted us to be apprised of what's going on there. I would have been happy to help in any way that I could, as I would with any resident. And also, Mr. Grzelka, can you respond?
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, I'm Michael Grzelka, the county engineer. And yes, Mr. Powell, you and I have met out there on site, and I did respond. I actually wrote the responses from your email that you had directed to Commissioner Hurd. I wrote those responses and went forward them back to you.
Okay, so I emailed you, misheard, not Mr. G., first off. Secondly, he provided me a survey of 2018 prior to my home being developed. If you take a look at that, there's a pole barn in the place where you're stating that that water ran, and about 10 to 15 feet prior to that is where the water actually runs off. You could physically see it. My 11-year-old could go out there right now and point that out. I wouldn't be coming back here every month or every week whenever these are here if I didn't want something done, ma'am. I don't believe I'd only ask to be heard. I'm not coming up here asking for extravagant, you know, solutions. I'm just asking, come to the place, take a look at it, get some boots on the ground. It wouldn't hurt, especially today.
You haven't invited me to join, to inspect your property, and I'm not an engineer. I rely upon my staff.
Engineers aren't doing very well either right now, ma'am.
Also, the developer is not allowed to impact you negatively. I promise you that we will do everything that we can to make sure that the developer is compliant with all of our regulations, and that means not impacting you in a negative manner. And I give you my word on that.
And you've done that before, and I appreciate that. But actions speak louder than words.
So commissioners, you know, there's always a lot of details of this. Mr. Grzelka has been working, reviewing it. There was an incident with the developer where they did clear and were required to remove some materials. There's also alterations in that area that have caused problems in the past. So I think Mr. Grzelka's been working with the property owner to try to resolve that. They will continue to do so, hopefully that they can do it to everybody's satisfaction. But we can't always guarantee that within the law we're able to mitigate all problems that have happened. So we'll continue to work with you, sir. But our county engineer is the responsible party for providing the technical solutions, both for you and the adjacent property owners and what they have or haven't done. They will report back to the board. Certainly myself or any other commissioner can go and view the site, but in the end, we're going to rely on our technical experts to resolve it. So I implore you to do your best. If there is something that they have pointed out that you completely disagree with, those are things we can look at. Otherwise, we're going to rely on our engineering, county engineer, to satisfy you if at all possible.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, when you were here last time, I thought you made a compelling argument, and I think I told you that. And afterwards, I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Grzelka, our county engineer, the expert who's in charge of all of the other departments that would be involved in your circumstances. And he had said that he had written a full response to your questions to Commissioner Hurd, and it's not uncommon that if any of us would get a technical type of email asking for very specific types of answers, Commissioner Hurd, myself, and probably any of us wouldn't have the ability to give you those technical answers. I visit plenty of sites, but I just visit sites because, and I'm looking like you're looking. But when I had a conversation with Mr. Grzelka and he went through those, and I said, "Well, we didn't hear the responses," he said, "I sent them to the commissioner," which I said in this particular case, especially since you've been here a couple of times, and I thought you made a very compelling argument. I said, "Well, in this kind of a case, you got to send them to all of us. Even if it's not our district, we'd still need to know." And then he ran through basically a list of what the site looked like and what the circumstances were at the site, not just on the construction side, but on your side. And there were a couple of things that he explained, and I don't know if you want to get into the details now, but he did explain to me a couple of the things that were benefiting you, that had been done in the past and were done currently, that worked out to your advantage. And so I was comfortable with the response that Mr. Grzelka had given, based on what we hear, because, you know, obviously, we represent you and I appreciate that you come because that means it's really serious. But when we have had other issues in Palm City, you know, someone's building, a developer's building 12 or 13 homes, we're very particular about who lived there first and how does it affect. When you say water is running on from a site onto your property, that rings a bell for us. That's like, that really speaks to us because that's the issue that everyone's afraid that would happen. And if it is happening, we would expect our people to supervise and, if necessary, punish, if that's the right word, a developer that's damaging, you know, a situation that you had. But he, and I don't know if you two want to get into it now, but he had explained to me several things that started to sound like it was not exactly what you said, and I'm not saying that you didn't tell the truth. I'm saying there were some things that were benefiting you that might not benefit other people, that you had to your advantage. And I figured, "All right, we'll leave it alone." And then when I saw you here again today, I said, "I guess it's not working to your level of expectation," but it's not because we're not paying attention. You in particular are probably getting more attention from the five of us and our senior staff because you earned it and you deserve it because you come.
Appreciate that.
You know, people that come, "Look, you're doing it. You come and ask us," but we don't even normally respond to a public comment. But we are all interested in you and making sure that your situation is resolved, and if it's not, you know, then there might not be a resolution for you if, and I don't know you personally, maybe you're one of these guys that's like, "I don't care, I'm never going to be happy," but you don't seem that way. So if we can help you, if any of the five of us and our staff can help you, we're going to try, more so than I think most people have gotten. And so it might be an ongoing situation. And, you know, my brother's a contractor, and he says this expression since I'm a little kid, "You got to break a couple of eggs if you're going to make an omelet," you know? And if you're the existing neighbor, you're our primary responsibility. I got no allegiance to, I didn't even know, I don't remember the developer's name who was next door to you. I just know if it's adversely affecting you, I would expect, we would expect, our staff to protect you. And from what I heard, it wasn't exactly like no one's paying attention and no one's done anything. When you said you never heard back from Commissioner Hurd, well, you have, through our staff, because she doesn't know what to do for you, so.
Understood. And there was another, I won't even get into that. One other comment, if it was your homes, the situation wouldn't be going the same. I assure you that.
Well, even if it's your home, I want it to go the way it is. I want you to come back here one day and say, "It worked out."
And I'd love to be able to do that.
Want that.
But I, there's no communication. I got one email from Mr. G., and I'm not throwing you under the bus, you know, weeks ago, and I've been in here since then, and I've received no communication. A phone call, a spam email at this point would be great. I have no further comments for today, and thank you for your time, guys.
Commissioner Heatherington would like to make the comment.
Yes. Mr. Powell, I did come visit you at your house, and I understand your concerns because I had run into you in Indian Town at the Indian Town Chamber of Commerce event, and you said, you know, "Please come see it." I came, and what I see is, and I believe that the board had given direction to resolve some of those issues in the previous meeting, but what I see most concerning, and you expressed, is the pathway that has no buffer, no separation, no fence. I think had any of us seen that, it would have been a condition of the PUD. And as recently as yesterday, I spoke to a staff member about what, do we have any solutions that we can come up with? So I think many of us are working on trying to come up with a solution, and I know it's not immediate, but I think we're all working on coming up with something.
Thank you again. And, Ms. Hurd, I mean no disrespect.
Thank you. Jen Parker would like to speak to us. If you would like to address us, please fill out a request to speak form and hand it to the bailiff. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak today. I'm representing the other neighborhood that's right on the border of what's happening to Derek's property as well. We're the Fern Creek Property Association. We have like 24 homes in our neighborhood, and it's definitely been an interesting, I'd say, last eight months of seeing how it's all been developing. Mainly, I'm here just to speak that we do have a backside that is going to be looking at the property that truly has been affected very harshly with an incident that happened where they pushed a lot of the dirt that was actually mud and water and all that and went past the silt fencing and actually pushed it into three neighbors' yards that are bordering right there where it's happening. And it was truly a big mess, probably an EPA violation. There was just lots, lots going on there, and I do know that somebody lost their job that day because of what happened. I was hoping that some of our neighbors would come and speak today as well. Danny and I happen to live on the side that isn't affected, but we do have a pond that is being affected by all the water runoff that's coming off of that land that's right there, coming right down into the culvert that is then running into the pond that's right next to our house. And the level, of course, is higher, getting higher and higher, and we may have to look into flood insurance because of it. But I don't know, I'm just like very concerned about also how we are seeing a lot of things happening but not being informed about it in terms of maybe it's the developer. Like today, we had so many trucks in there that were putting into the new electricity poles and all that I think that they're going to be using, and like our whole street was just cut off in half. But like we had no knowledge that that was going to happen that day. All of a sudden, a sign went up saying, "People, roadwork," and that was it. But it's also causing a lot of, even more with the road divots that are happening off of pepper wood, because it's pepper wood and button wood that are being affected by the high traffic that's happening with the large trucks that are coming in. And not to mention that we've also are having people out there at 5:00 in the morning, like with their lights on, with these trucks running, that we can even hear at our house with impact windows. So I don't know if there's rules that they have to follow, like they're not supposed to do noise until 7:00 o'clock, you know, just like lawn maintenance people that we have come in that aren't allowed to work until after 7:00, but it is happening at 5:00 in the morning. And I do feel bad for our back neighbors there that are getting those lights that are right in their windows that early in, so. But I don't know, I just wanted to express some of those concerns that we're seeing. Oh, and that's my time. But thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
We will address them. Thank you very much for coming in and informing us. Commissioner Campy.
Mr. Grzelka, you know, we, I would say to the public comments, we only know what we are informed by. I was not aware of those situations, especially the three that you ticked off. If the silt fence, if that's the whole concept of a silt fence, is everything stays on that side. And 5:00 in the morning is completely inappropriate. Trucks, you know, you're talking about trucks that are working on that project from your residential streets, if you can tighten it up for us, unless there's something we're missing, but it sounded pretty cut and dry to me.
Now, again, for the record, Michael Grzelka, the county engineer. Yes, we got notification that there was a spill out there where it got stuck, it pushed off the road. We immediately sent people out there, got a hold of the contractor, got a hold of the developer, got it under control. Yes, it did take two or three days to get it completely cleaned up. There was also some issues out there with the, some, the side of the roads being rutted up and things like that, which we were addressed at the same time. We had some complaints or some concerns come in from the residents about some of the drainage. We had our field ops people out there to look at the system. The roadside swales are ours to maintain. The pond and the outfall out of the pond, which is completely overgrown, which needs maintenance on it, is the maintenance responsible of the HOA. So we informed them of that, that, you know, we would take care of any of the roadside swell stuff, but the HOA needs to take care of the actual outfall and the ditch leaving their pond and their stuff which heads back up to Flannan Road. This is the first I've heard about 5:00 AM. I will have that addressed tomorrow morning because unless we get told about it.
Who's the developer?
It's Lennar.
Then, like the gentleman said, they're going to want to work elsewhere in the county, even if it's not in the PUD? I personally, and I'm sure my colleagues agree, I don't want this. I don't want to hear from the neighbors. They're supposed to be a good neighbor. Otherwise, when they come back looking for another project, I will remember. We all will.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know that, you know, we are, like I said, the first I heard about 5:00 AM, we will jump on that tomorrow morning, the drainage stuff we keep working with on this, and trust me, commissioners, my in-laws live in this neighborhood. I get all kinds of phone calls.
And I'm not personally blaming you or our staff, but if they got, they asked us to build there, I expect them to work at a very high level. And it's one after the other, after the other, after the other, and some of that sounds very legitimate and not that hard to, it's like, "Well, maybe it's one way or the other." It sounds pretty cut and dry. I expect them to work better, and it's not your fault, but if, you know, let them know. Let them, send them this, 10 minutes of this meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We will now proceed with Ms. Merly.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Stephanie Merly, Director of OMB, here to present to you our fiscal year 2026 final budget public hearing. As part of the truth in millage process, the board is statutorily required to hold a second public hearing on the final budget in millage rates between September 20th and October 8th, which is where we're at right now. Also, if this sounds familiar, it is, it's exactly the same except for a couple slides. The millage rates proposed today have been advertised in the Stewart News on Friday, September 19th. The board is required to adopt a final budget via approval of resolutions for each taxing authority's millage rate and the corresponding budgets. As part of the trim process, the adoption of the budget requires the contemplation of the rollback rate, which is the millage rate that would generate the same amount as the prior year's ad valorem tax revenues, less any allowances for new construction and additions to the valuation. Pursuant to trim guidelines, the county is permitted to have a millage rate cap of a total of 10 mils for the countywide taxing authority, as well as 10 mils for the cumulative municipal services taxing units, or MSTUs. The proposed rates for fiscal year 2026 are all within the maximum allowable per Florida state statutes. The following are the millage rates that were tentatively approved at the first public hearing on September 10th. Each specific millage rate, rollback rate, and corresponding increase or decrease over the rollback rate will be recited with each resolution adoption. And per Florida state statutes, I'm required to go over all of the ad valorem impact drivers. The total new ad valorem generated, if the millage remained constant, would have equated to approximately $40.2 million, but the county's actual ad valorem need based on the budgeted expenditures amounted to $38.1 million, which resulted in a reduction of the total millage rate from last fiscal year. The ad valorem impacts are as follows. All constitutional officers in the 19th Judicial Circus Office account for 30% of the new ad valorem at $11.5 million. The capital improvement plan, which was tentatively approved on April 22nd, is included and accounted for $5.1 million of the new ad valorem. The CIP added funding for public buildings, roads, and stormwater management needs. And then various reserves were allocated in the FY 26 budget. The general fund restricted reserves were fully replenished based on the county's fiscal policy reserve requirement of 10%. And additionally, the FY 26 budget builds strategic additional reserves to support a strong long-term fiscal strategy. These include reserves for future capital projects identified in our CIP. Additional funds are being set aside to establish recurring revenues for anticipated public-private partnership projects such as our Martin County Public Operations, Public Works Operations facility. And finally, the budget includes reserves dedicated to debt repayment, helping to further improve the county's already strong long-term debt ratio and reinforce its strong standing with credit rating agencies. Overall, the county's millage rate decreased by 0.246% for countywide and 1.611% for unincorporated Martin County, with a total combined millage rate reduction of 0.713%. This marks the second consecutive budget cycle that the Martin County B OCC has reduced both the countywide and unincorporated overall millage rates. The following is a summary highlighting the changes from fiscal year 25 to fiscal year 26. The county's taxable base increased overall by 12.88%, and the greatest drivers for the overall budget increase are mostly non-ad valorem, including the half-cent conservation land sales tax that were approved by Martin County voters, as well as enterprise-funded operations such as our utilities and airport. This budget includes 11 additional positions for the B OCC and 11.5 positions cumulatively for all of the constitutional officers. And then finally, the total millage rate reflects a reduction from 9.9897 to 9.9185. And as part of the hearing requirement, the board must adopt resolutions for tentative, for final budget adoption. The resolutions are not required to be read in full but must state the taxing authority, the rollback rate, the percentage increase or decrease over the rollback rate, and the millage to be levied for fiscal year 26. The board must also call for public comment, which we have done already, to comply with public hearing requirements. And with this budget adoption, the adoption of the FY 26 budget represents a critical step in aligning our financial resources with the county's strategic plan. This ensures that every dollar supports our highest priorities, allowing for more focused, efficient, and impactful implementation of the county's goals. Driven by the strategic priorities identified by the board back in February, the team developed strategic goals and objectives that align financial planning with the county's key focus areas, which we have dubbed quality of governance, quality of place, and quality of life. This ensures that budgetary resources are allocated responsibly and effectively to deliver public value to the county's citizens, taxpayers, businesses, and visitors. And just a shout out to the team who helped the strategic plan is, we have Shelby Baker with OMB, Andrew McBean with the airport, Richard Riley with Library, Brittany Bassett Utilities and Solid Waste, and George Zama Public Works before he left. And with that, my presentation is complete, and if you have any comments or questions, I'm happy to take those. If not, we may begin.
Any comments or questions?
Okay, the comments are, is this the final vote? I mean, right now?
We're going to go through.
Or we could go through all of these things, okay?
So do you have comments?
No, I'll wait till after we go through all of this. Yes.
Okay, our first one is, move to adopt a final millage for taxing authority Board of County Commissioners countywide. Rollback rate 5.9159, percentage of increase over rollback rate 10.91, with a final millage rate of 6.5614.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Pose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final budget Board of County Commissioners countywide. Fund total $318,825,362.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Pose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final millage for District 1 MSTU. Rollback rate 0.0671, percentage of increase over rollback rate negative 0.75, final millage 0.0666.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final budget taxing authority District 1 MSTU. Fund total $372,909.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final millage for District 2 MSTU. Rollback rate 0.0762, percentage of increase over rollback rate negative 2.62, final millage rate 0.0742.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final budget for District 2 MSTU. Fund total $215,000.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final millage for District 3 MSTU. Rollback rate 0.0297, percentage of increase over rollback rate 36.03, final millage rate of 0.0404.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
opposed.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final budget for District 3 MSTU. Fund total $324,881.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
opposed.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final millage for District 4 MSTU. Rollback rate 0.0485, percentage of increase over rollback rate negative 1.44, with a final millage rate of 0.0478.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for taxing authority District 4 MSTU. Fund total $214,390.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final millage for District 5 MSTU. Rollback rate 0.0686, percentage of increase over rollback rate negative 2.19, with a final millage rate of 0.0671.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final budget for District 5 MSTU. Final fund $370,000.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final millage for Special District A 61 Hutchinson Island MSTU. Rollback rate 0.1682, percentage of increase over rollback rate 6.96, with a final millage rate of 0.1799.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
opposed.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final budget for Special District A 61 Hutchinson Island MSTU. Fund total $422,100.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final millage for Fire Rescue MSTU, unincorporated. Rollback rate of 2.3732, percentage of increase over rollback rate 11.14, final millage rate 2.6376.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final budget for Fire Rescue M S T U. Unincorporated. Fund total eighty-five million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final millage for M S T U. Parks and Recreation. Rollback rate zero point one three nine seven. Percentage of increase over rollback rate five point five one. Final millage rate zero point one four seven four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final budget for M S T U. Parks and Recreation. Fund total four million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final millage for Countywide M S T U. Unincorporated Storm Water and Main Road Maintenance. Rollback rate zero point five one one. Percentage of increase over rollback rate eleven point eight zero. Final millage rate zero point five seven two two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt final budget for Countywide M S T U. Unincorporated Storm Water and Road Maintenance. Fund total fifteen million, three hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections?
Oppose.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Move to adopt a final budget for General Unincorporated Fund. Fund total eight million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Building and Permitting. Fund total eleven million, four hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Impact Fees. Fund total four million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Special Revenue. Fund total thirty-two million, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Grants. Fund total two million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, thirty-three dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Other Debt Service. Fund total eight million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Other Capital Projects. Fund total thirty-four million, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Utilities Enterprise. Fund total one hundred and twenty-four million, forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Solid Waste Enterprise. Fund total forty-eight million, seven hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Airport Enterprise. Fund total three million, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt final budget for Golf Course Enterprise. Fund total three million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt the final budget for Internal Service Funds. Fund total forty-six million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Trust. Fund total eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously.
Move to adopt a final budget for Community Redevelopment Area Trust. Fund total nine million, nine hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any objections? That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the conclusion of our public hearing, our final public hearing. Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah, will we be making more comments after this, or this is the final?
No, this is it.
Okay, so I would like to make a statement. You know, it's not that I don't support projects and programs, but we should be less liberal and more prudent with our spending. I think our constituents would appreciate more effort on our part to employ efficiencies within Martin County. And for this reason, and the reasons that I stated at the September tenth budget hearing, I cannot support this budget in its entirety, and I do oppose it.
Mr. Campy?
I appreciate those comments, and I understand that's why there's five of us that can give a different perspective, and they vote based on where their hearts and minds and their education and their research tells them to do. But in regards to how the staff has worked individually, department by department, I think there is definitely a, a policy, if not a sense, where every one of our employees, whatever they're doing, they're thinking of how can they do it more efficiently? How can they do it more financially effectively? I think even when new employees come in, I think it's not long before they realize that the ethos of our organization is one of conservativeness. It is easy, obviously, to find spots here and there where we can find efficiencies, I think, having had the opportunity to be through a couple of different administrative leadership, department head leadership in the main departments, the more, you know, all of the departments are important, but some of them obviously have tremendous budgets with lots and hundreds of employees. I think from Mr. Donaldson through his deputy administrators, through our department heads, have always had that in mind to work as financially conservative and as effectively as possible. Our budget department wouldn't allow too many kind of loopholes, whether it was Mrs. Manning, when she was here for thirty-five years, or now under the sharp tutelage of Ms. Merly. We have won a nationwide award for decades that they don't hand out, hand out willy-nilly. I appreciate, you know, a newer perspective, and there's a sense that maybe we could sharpen, and we can. There's always. But the overall sense of the budget is a, is a process that is mandated by the state and then very carefully thought through, where we've all had the opportunity to meet with our administration to discuss things. I've had issues with certain portions of the budget that I pushed back on, and sometimes they have worked to where it came to the situation that I thought would work, and sometimes there was an explanation. I would encourage new commissioners and old that if there is a concern, there is a long process. It's a five- or six-month, seven-month-long process specifically designed for each of us not only to hear comments during the workshops and these adoption hearings. Sometimes there's a crowd, sometimes there's not. But I have had constituents ask me questions about very specific things that I have had the opportunity to either ask of Ms. Merly or ask of Mr. Donaldson or department heads, and say, hey, what about this? And hey, what about that? And I had a constituent that saw something happening, and, and they thought that there might be a better way. And quite often, if it was a valid concern, appropriate actions were taken. And sometimes it was just merely a matter of opinion on how a certain process would be done. So I have the utmost respect for my colleagues, but the concept that there might be a possibility that the budget is put together in somewhat of a slipshot, or that the departments are working where a little too liberal financially, I, I think as the years progress and people have an opportunity to be involved in how this works, that's what gives us the, some of us senior, you know, longer-serving commissioners have developed a comfort level because some of those initial concerns and questions have been answered year after year after year. And our bond ratings and our other outside rating agencies have always looked upon Martin County as, as an example of how it can be done. So yes, I don't say that there's nothing that could be found in different procedures and strategy that could maybe save some money here and there, but our staff is experts at taking a dollar and turning it into five and saving money. And so I appreciate everyone's individual opinions, but I want the public to hear that I believe every one of the elected officials will come to a comfort level that our staff in every department is doing exactly what you would do with your own bank account. And then if they weren't, it's hard to get it past Ms. Merly and her team, and it's certainly harder to get it past Mr. Donaldson. He's an engineer by trade. He's a cruncher, and, and really digs deep into things, probably annoyingly so. But that being said, we run a very tight fiscal ship, and our residents can rest assured. And then, of course, it comes to the five of us. And Commissioner Hurd, it really warms my heart to see she was the one we battled. And I think that after years of pushing the, the organization in the right direction, she has obviously developed a level of trust in the folks that are responsible, to the point where she's participating at this kind of interesting level. And I'm very pleased and happy to have that, because eventually that's where you come. And if not, we would be beating people over the heads before this meeting. But by the time it shows up here, the numbers are pretty tight. And that was much less than twelve minutes. I yield back the remainder of my time.
Yeah. Commissioner Vargas, I certainly understand and, and respect the position that you've taken. I have voted against numerous budgets myself. I have voted against numerous department budgets myself. I have voted against the sheriff's budgets. I have voted against the fire rescue budgets. I voted against a lot of elements of the budgets. But I feel that in this case, that, well, the Office of Management and Budget does a wonderful job, and they create the budget that the majority board wants them to create. They don't have complete autonomy. They're creating what they think three commissioners will support. And, and they do a fabulous job. I, I want to thank you. This was, this was a very difficult budget. This isn't the budget that I wanted. I was, was hoping for one that was much more generous than this one was in order to prepare us for next year. But that wasn't an inevitability. So, and now we have today and tomorrow, Representative Oberdorf's committee is meeting in order to consider constitutional amendments that's going to reform ad valorem taxation. It's going to lessen the amount of ad valorem taxes that we collect, even though our budget, our ad valorem budget supports forty-four percent of our budget. And Representative Oberdorf has not, he has signaled his intent that he is not looking to replace the ad valorem budgets that he subtracts. So pay attention in the upcoming days when we receive the results of the subcommittee meetings today and tomorrow. Commissioner Camps?
I would like to turn our attention to page three twenty-five. If we could put that on the screen. This is a strategic plan that was put together by a group of people. And Ms. Merly, if you could let us know who those folks were, once again, if you haven't already, but I think these people need to be recognized for a great job. I, I think it's really interesting, these, these catchy bullet points here. Quality of governance, quality of place, and quality of life. I just was very impressed with the, the good thought put behind this.
Good job.
I see that, Richard, you questioned Ms. Merly.
I will say, it is not an easy task combining five different views into one document, but I'm so thankful of everybody here that really put their heads together to really make it a document we feel that you would be proud of, and also to just make, I'm proud to work at the county. I live in the county. I keep saying this, and to me, this is just one of our launching points for really even more greatness that we already have. And so with that, I would also ask that you move recommendation.
So moved. Recommendation to.
Second on my.
Unless you, what size is that neck brace? Yeah.
I'm looking for direction. Was this advertised? So can we vote on this?
Yes, it's actually included in your recommendation if you add to this agenda.
Yes.
Yes, it was included in the, in the agenda item as a recommendation to approve, and it was included in the packet. It was advertised. So it's just to update your strategic plan. And this only last thing I would say, it largely embodies all of the things you've already been doing. So it was an update to many of the strategic objectives that we're already doing. And I think that's really what it symbolizes most, is all the things you've asked us to do, but put in, reflected in a modern form, so.
Nicely done.
I heard it was so difficult. I'm surprised you guys are even standing next to each other. Most of the time, you had to be separated. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Job very well done.
Very well done. I had a couple of comments as well, if I could.
Sure.
I'd just like to thank County Administrator Don Donaldson and O B M Director Stephanie Merly for putting a great budget together. I, I'm amazed at all of the data, very well-written data that supported the budget and made it easy to understand as a new commissioner. I really appreciated that, so thank you very much. And also, like we said before, for developing the strategic plan. That was so well done. You know, when I think about a few of the bullet points, characteristics of this budget and our finances as a whole in the county, I'm really impressed with how solid the finances are. And wanted to emphasize just two or three bullet points. We're lowering the millage. We're not raising the millage. We're lowering the millage this year. And then another couple of little things that come to mind to me is that we have strong They were enumerated on one of the charts. There were four different categories of reserves that were strengthened substantially this year. We have strong reserves. We have low debts in our county government. I think it can be said that we have more money in reserves than we have in total debts, if I remember that in my prior study of the documents. And then we have strong bond ratings. And they don't give those out unless you have really solid finances. And this year, we have an easier road because we had some extra money that came in from elevated property values. And so I think it's a year to get some things done. Because property values go up and down. Everybody thinks that, that they're just going to keep going up. But I always try to remember the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, when property values were chopped in half, and there was a slow climb out of that hole that lasted several years. That could happen again. And I think this is a year to get some things done without raising the millage rate, because tougher years could be coming. You know, when you think about recession cycles, we're kind of due for one. When's the last time we had a really bad recession? I hate to be a doomsdayer, but, but think about how many years it's been since we've had a really deep recession. It could happen. You know, hopefully it won't, and maybe it'll be several years, maybe it'll just be a couple of years, but somewhere down the road, we're going to have to really get tough, you know, and tighten the belts, just like they did in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. I've heard the horror stories of how we were really struggling in those years. So in those years, you don't have a choice to get anything done. You're not getting anything done. You're, you're just keeping the wheels barely turning. So you better grab the opportunity to get some things done when you can, without raising the millage rates and without being too burdensome. the millage rates and without being too burdensome on the taxpayers. And I think that's what this budget does, so I am in support.
Thank you. Any further observations? Any public comments? Mr. Donaldson, anything further? Ms. Murley, anything further?
Just thank you for, the board for indulging, and Don and Elise for their support, and of course, all the department directors that I put through some stuff, and also my staff. I'm very thankful.
When do you start working on the next budget?
Like in a month. It's more of a nine-to-10-month process for our office, yes.
Like a baby?
Yes. And this is it.
And the department heads enjoy their brownies.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We adjourned.